January 26th. And we will begin with Priya, who's going to help us understand our remote access and our Spanish language interpretation.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth, and welcome, everyone. So tonight's meeting will have live Spanish interpretation. And to access the Spanish interpretation, you will need to download the Zoom app to your smartphone, your tablet, or your computer. And instructions on how to do that in English and Spanish are posted on the city's website and on the agenda. Once you do that, you will join the meeting. And then there will be a little globe at the bottom or the top of your screen, and you'll click on that globe, and that will allow you to access the live Spanish interpretation. And we have Marcy and Claudia here, who are our interpreters. And then I'm going to jump over to my other screen and talk a little bit about how you can participate into tonight's meeting. So if you are joining the meeting through the Zoom app, you can use the little raise hand icon at the top or the bottom of your screen. And you can use that during when public comment is called. If you are joining just using the phone, what you're going to do is you're going to dial 669-900-6833. And then at the prompt, you're going to enter 870-2008-8572. You'll press pound or hashtag. And then during public comment, you'll press star nine to speak. And I'll throw this up again when we do more public comment. But that is for those who are attending, just calling in only. And that is my presentation on how to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now what we'll do, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and then the roll call, and then we'll get into a presentation by Dr. Lucio on the COVID situation. So if, for the Pledge of Allegiance, if folks could mute their microphone and place your hand on your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if we could have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dory?
I'm still here.
Councilmember Chito?
Yes.
Hardy?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Very good. Thank you. And now I'm going to, Dr. Lucio, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Very good. So I'm going to pass this off to you to give us an update on the COVID situation. Before I do that, I want to thank you on behalf of our community, on behalf of our council, everybody here, the incredible work you and your staff have done over this past year, helping us through this most challenging situation. I just want you to feel that gratitude from us. And I will pass this over to you and for an update of where things are.
Hey, thank you. I do have a presentation, so I'm just wondering if is there somebody that has, that could give me presenter's rights or?
Cindy, is that something you've got?
Perfect. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. So Mayor Ellsworth and City Councilmembers, Dr. Karen Lucio, Health Officer and Public Health Director. So let me first start with what's going on with our disease activity. So we've had, you know, we've peaked out at 2,600 cases in December. And now we are in our last week of January, and we're at 2,100 cases. So the jury's out there whether we will, I, you know, catch up to December or else hopefully be below December. So hopefully, we will have hit our peak. And then our average daily case rates, so as you remember, it seems like a long time ago, during the month of October, in the third week, when we were in orange, we had four average daily cases. And lately, we've had anywhere from 80 to 100 average daily cases. So we've come a long way since that time, and we have been in deep purple. And then our case rates peaked out about three weeks ago at 50 per 100,000 population. It's now at 30, in the mid 30s. But as you remember, a long time ago, in October 20th, we were at four per 100,000 population. So it's a big difference in what we're seeing now than what we saw in October. And then this is just looking at case rate by region. So the Calistoga area had a higher case rates. And, you know, they were pretty much, they peaked out somewhere in October where they had 650 per 100,000 population. But just, it's important to remember, Calistoga is smaller. So, you know, it takes a couple families to get infected, and then it drives up the case rate. So, but they've remained, you know, in a high range, anywhere from 400 to 600 for quite some time. St. Helena also had high case rates with a peak of 600 per 100,000 population sometime in the end of December, which is now decreasing. Yountville has stayed anywhere between 200 and 400. And of course, since they have the Veterans Home, that does drive up their case rate. Napa and American Canyon, which are population centers, had also caught up with 600 per 100,000 population, but it's dropping off, which is good. And then American Canyon actually peaked out even higher. They had, they had like almost 800 per 100,000 population. So it's dropping as well. So our test positivity rates are still 8%, still in a range that is in the purple tier. In October, when we were in orange, our testing positivity rate was like 1.7%. So just imagine that it had increased tenfold by the beginning of January and is now sustained at 8%. Our hospitalizations, you know, have actually peaked out at over 20 in the last couple of weeks, but we've maintained anywhere from 15 to 20 in the last two weeks every day. And then in terms of intensive care unit admissions, there was a peak of 10 at a time, which then there was a drop. And then it's, you know, maintaining at, you know, like anywhere from two to eight admissions a day. The percentage ICU beds available in Napa County is actually below the state level at this point. So the state had changed its methodology over the weekend where they started counting surge beds that are staffed. So, you know, as you know, Napa County had had 0% in their ICU, 0% availability in their ICU at some time, and we're still below 10% at this time. So we've had 320 hospitalizations with the average age of those being hospitalized at 62 years. Our most common age group are those that are 65 years of age or older at 44%, followed by those that are aged 50 to 64 years of age at 32%. And then we've had quite a few 30 to 49%, I mean, 30 to 49 years of age that's hospitalized, about 20%. And most of our hospitalizations are in the Latinx population, followed by non-Hispanic whites. Over 60% of those being hospitalized have an underlying comorbidity, and most of our hospitalizations are in males. So as you can see here, we've had a peak in deaths. We've had 21 deaths in the month of January. And we've had, we've hit the century mark or half-century mark in the beginning of this week. And actually, this slide is already out today, is out of date because we had two more deaths today. So we're actually at 52 deaths. The average age of death is 73 years with a range of 43 to 98 years of age. And then in terms of our deaths, Latinx and non-Hispanic whites tie in first place in terms of deaths. And our, the gender, it's mostly males. So in the last couple of weeks, most of our exposures are either unknown. And part of it is we've had cases that are so high that we've had to prioritize who gets investigated. So a lot of our concentration are in those that are 50-plus are in current settings or else less than 18 because of schools. So we do a full investigation in that. And then anyone that's in the middle, like they're over 18 and then are up to 49 years of age, we do an abbreviated investigation through a virtual, a virtual assistant. So we don't get as much detail, and it depends on how well they fill it out. Additionally, so, so that's where, that's where some of the limitations on figuring out what's causing all our cases are coming from is just because of sheer volume. So most of our cases are close contacts with a case, mostly in households. And then it's followed by those that get it in the community through unknown transmission. They don't know where they got it from. And when, you know, we're seeing cases in the community, just when we're seeing the spread, it becomes hard to identify. We have outbreaks still. So, you know, even though there was the announcement that we got out of the regional stay-at-home order, we're still in deep purple. We have 14 outbreaks, five in assisted living or senior care facilities, five in skilled nursing facilities, two in memory care facilities, one in a behavioral health facility, and then other congregate facility, which is a senior, senior independent living. In terms of school cohorts, we've closed 31 school cohorts because they have a staff or a student testing positive, which leads to closure. But I can tell you that we have not seen an outbreak within a school as a, as a result of one person testing positive. So the schools are doing a great job at making sure that they follow procedures once a student or a staff test positive. So we don't, we don't have any currently closed cohorts, and we had four that reopened in the beginning of the week. We have 36 workplace outbreaks. So at this point, we are in deep purple for blueprint for a safer economy. So just to put things in a perspective, case rate of over seven is considered a purple. And, you know, we're at 32.1. So we're far above that. And we get in a downward adjustment because of our testing. So our actual, our actual cases are 56.2, but our adjusted cases is 32.1 is reversed on this table inadvertently. Our seven-day average testing positivity is 8.5%. And then our health equity testing positivity is almost 13%. So those that are in, and those that are disproportionately impacted populations that live in census tracts, that have the lowest socioeconomic status or the lowest life expectancies, they are suffering a disproportionate impact of COVID-19. So our case doubling time has increased to 61 days, which is good. We want it to go up because that means it takes longer to double. And then our outbreaks have, of course, increased since last week by four more facilities where we're having outbreaks. In the current week, our hospitalizations are 13, but in the previous week is 19. And then in terms of deaths, we've had three this week, and then in a previous week, eight. So in total, 4% of our cases have been hospitalized, 1.1% in the ICU, and 0.6% of our cases have died. So this is the welcome news, is that the state lifted the regional stay-at-home order yesterday. So it was affected yesterday, which is effective immediately. So this allowed for some businesses to open, and I will go into more detail on what that means. This is based on a four-week projection of ICU capacity. So what they're looking at, they're looking ahead four weeks to see if a region is going to be 15% or more. So the Bay Area is at 25% based on projected capacity. And so these capacities depend on four different variables. First is the current estimated ICU capacity that's available in our hospitals. The second one is current community transmission. So basically, they take what our case rates are, and then they project four weeks out what that means for hospitalizations and deaths. Hospitals, hospitalizations and ICU admissions are lagging indicators of transmission. So if your cases are high, the hospitalizations and the ICU admissions follow two to three weeks later. And then deaths follow after that. So, and then, so the other thing is that our projected capacity also depends on regional case rates and as well as the proportion of cases that are admitted to intensive care unit. So we landed back in the purple tier. This also removed the limited stay-at-home order, which is, which is the curfew. I don't know if you guys remember that. It's almost like I forgot about the curfew because of the regional stay-at-home order being put on top of it. So our current ICU capacity is 10%. So it's not great, but it's not zero. And then there is a state health officer order for any regions or any counties where the ICU capacity is less than 10%, where certain elective surgeries need to be delayed. And that's going to still take effect even though the regional stay-at-home order is lifted. So what does this mean for our businesses? So, you know, critical infrastructure, of course, is open with modifications. And then outdoor playgrounds is open. So hair salons and barber shops and personal care services are open indoors with modifications. Retail and shopping centers are open indoors at the max of 25% capacity. And museums, zoos, and aquariums are only open outdoors. Places of worship, movie theaters, and gyms and fitness centers are outdoor only with modifications. And then hotels and lodging can open with modifications. So when we were in the regional stay-at-home order, as you remember, hotels could only be used for isolation and quarantine or for housing emergency services workers, but now they can be open for purposes outside of that. And then restaurants and wineries are open outdoors only. And then bars, breweries, and distilleries are closed. Family entertainment centers are outdoor only, as well as card rooms and satellite wagering. Offices should be remote. And then professional sports are open without live audiences, and there's no live audience sports. So I'm going to move on to vaccination because that's probably the biggest thing that's going on now, and that's the biggest lift for us at the current time. So Napa County so far, and this is talking about not just the Health Department, but it's also all over healthcare systems that are within Napa County, has administered a total of over 15,000 doses. And I think I want to, first of all, give a shout out to St. Helena Hospital Foundation, who's done an incredible job of doing a lot of vaccinations of our essential workers and our, and our seniors. They've done really amazing jobs. So I just wanted to kind of back up because the beginning of the year, the first weekend in January of 2021, the governor had put forth a challenge that the state of California should back, should provide 1 million doses in 10 days. So there was a lot of activity of scurrying to make sure that we can start vaccinating. And the second weekend of January, we had an emergency meeting with our healthcare partners on Sunday, and how we can really start to do, to administer 10,000 doses of vaccine a week. So literally, you know, 48 hours later, St. Helena Hospital Foundation is up and running, and they're vaccinating like hundreds in the very first day. And, you know, and then also Napa County has had also stood up a mass vaccination site at the expo. So the Governor's Million Doses Initiative led us to the realization that Napa County does have the capacity to vaccinate many. But then, as soon as, you know, we had gone for two weeks, we realized that the supplies were dry. So, so we could double our capacity. We know that St. Helena Hospital can double their capacity, yet we don't have enough vaccine. And then I just wanted to put out messages about, mixed messages about available vaccine supply. So we were told that after we've, you know, done our mass vaccination clinics, that vaccine supply will continue to increase. And that has not quite been realized. And I think part of it is that California is being seen as being in last place across the United States in administering the vaccine that is allocated. And a lot of it has been due to issues with the data reporting system of doses. So there's mixed messages on that. And then there's just been a lot of changes to our phases and tiers. So just to back up a little bit, because I've never presented to you guys about vaccine before, Phase 1A is all about healthcare workers in various settings. So that's, you know, there's three tiers within Phase 1A. Tier one are healthcare workers in acute care hospitals or dialysis, long-term care facilities, and acute psychiatric hospitals. Tier two are outpatient clinics, urgent care, jail facilities. And then tier three is a lot of the specialty clinics or affiliated, affiliated healthcare workers, such as, you know, mental health practitioners, occupational therapists, physical therapists. So that, that is what makes Phase 1A. So we were actually, you know, vaccinating mostly through Phase 1A, and then we ended up in Phase 1B more recently. So in the last, you know, week or so, we've been in Phase 1B. And this was what it used to be. So Phase 1B Tier 1 used to be people that are aged 75 years of age or older. It included first responders or emergency services workers, and that expands beyond fire and police. This could include domestic violence workers or sexual assault workers. This could include child welfare, social workers, adult protective services. So it's, it's expanded further than fire and police. And then there's education and childcare, and then food and agriculture. A couple weeks ago, there was a federal announcement that the priority is to vaccinate people 65 years of age or older. So a couple, a few days later, the state had added 65-plus to Phase 1B Tier 1, expanding it significantly. So if you put things in a perspective, the number of people that we have, 75 years of age or older, is probably around 9,000 to 10,000. But then you add 65-plus, and then now we're over 24,000. So this is about 20% of our population that we're trying to vaccinate with not enough vaccine. So the way that we're really approaching vaccination, and we're working with our healthcare partners to do so as well, is to continue to vaccinate Phase 1A, which are the healthcare workers. And then, you know, just continue through Phase 1B Tier 2, focusing on 65-plus, and then prioritizing all these other sectors. So this is mixed messaging, but this is what, this is literally what came off the Governor's presser. So because 65-plus is a large group, we're actually starting first with 75 years of age or older. And then we're going to people that are aged 65 to 74 years of age with medical conditions, and then going to people that are 65 to 74 years of age without medical conditions. And then in that, in that category, we are supposed to prioritize disproportionately impacted populations. And eventually, the state will transition us to age-based eligibility, which makes it easier for healthcare entities to vaccinate that way, because they don't tend to think in terms of business sectors when they vaccinate patients. So, so this is where we're at. We're trying to finish 1A. So for anyone, any, any healthcare workers that did not get vaccinated, we're trying to finish that off. And then we're just pretty much focusing a lot on Phase 1B Tier 1. We used to think that it might take us a month to get through that, but I think it's going to take longer because of other restrictions in vaccination and in vaccine supply. And then we're also coming, we're also running into a second dose situation where we're not sure we're going to get enough on time. So, so we're just having some guidance from the state, basically saying that local health jurisdictions and healthcare systems are being asked not to save vaccines for second doses and are being pressured to use them, or else they get taken away. So California Department of Public Health will reallocate the vaccines to somewhere else where they're going to use it faster, or else they enable local health officers to reallocate vaccines from providers who have not used at least 65% of their available supply and have not submitted a plan for administering the remaining vaccine to prioritize populations within four days of notice. So I think what they're trying to do is there are healthcare entities that are trying to save doses for second doses, and they want them to utilize as much as possible because of the shortage. So I think, so I think the problem with that is that the decision to use second doses is not really backed by vaccine rationing strategies, and the supply is uncertain. We're hoping more vaccine will come. I think that there's been a slight increase for next week's allocation by about 200,000. But when you think about it, you know, going from 475,000 to 600,000 and a population of 40 million is a drop in the bucket. The United Kingdom had proposed dose changes and how COVID vaccine is used because they were trying to give as many people first doses as much as possible. So there have been some proposals of giving only half the dose of vaccine, or else delaying administration of the second dose beyond the three- to four-week interval tested in Phase 3 trials. And, you know, I think that it's been really stated strongly by the FDA that that's not something they would endorse. And the Western State Scientific Safety Review Work Group, which is comprised of California, Oregon, Washington, and Nevada, concluded that the scientific data available to support the proposed changes are extremely limited. So it's, at this point, we're, we're hoping that the second doses arrive on time. So I just want to end with the fact that it's really nice that the regional stay-at-home order has been lifted. However, we are still in purple, and we cannot be complacent. So it's important to practice the three Ws, where, wear a mask, wash your hands, watch your distance, or the four Ms, masking, minimizing, mixing, and movement. And our whole goal, hopefully, is to pull away from purple and to, to do the preventive measures, because it takes a village to get us out of this pandemic. That's the end of my report, and I'm happy to take questions.
Dr. Lucio, thank you very, very much. I'm going to open it to council questions in just a moment. I do want to echo your praise and thank you to the St. Helena Hospital and the St. Helena Hospital Foundation for just incredible work in getting the vaccinations going here and working with Napa Valley College, City, County, and the nonprofits. And St. Helena Hospital and the Hospital Foundation have just been remarkable. I want to echo that. I want to just take a, take a moment in remembrance of those who've lost their lives, who've passed away. And, and through this, through this, know that they will remain in our hearts as we move forward. And the efforts of the county and the county health department have been extraordinary. And so I want to recognize that. And then I'm going to open it now to any council questions or comments at this point. I'm seeing Ms. Chito.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lucio. It is so sobering to see those statistics, both on our numbers and also the reality with the limited supply of the vaccinations. What I, and I also wanted to also say thank you so much to St. Helena Hospital Foundation. Having both of you working like you did was just incredible for our area, and it's been so hopeful and appreciated. So thank you. I was curious about the tiers, because that's something that I saw. I live near the college, and I would hear comments, and people would say, why is so-and-so getting it when they're younger? And I'm, you know, my 75-year-old parent hasn't gotten it. And I noticed in your tiers, you had 75 years and plus, first responders, education and childcare. So this is Phase 1B Tier 1, food and agriculture. Does everybody follow those steps? Or is it more, you know, because we're trying to get as many shots in arms, and the systems are not perfect, it can go between those groups?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think in the beginning, when we were doing a lot of our vaccinations, we were all being very, very strict about how we moved through the phases and tiers. So it's like, you can't go, you can't go any further unless you've finished Phase 1A Tier 1 first, and then you go to Tier 2, and then you go to Tier 3. And basically, that was slowing down the process of getting vaccines in arms. So basically, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to, the analogy is trying to overbook a flight, right? So we're trying to, if, you know, if people that are in Phase 1A Tier 1, if there's not enough of them, you just move on. And so basically, we're given the blessing from the state to move on through Phase 1A, all three tiers. And if, you know, if there's still enough vaccine, then you just go ahead and start, you know, vaccinating Phase 1B Tier 1. And as you can see, Phase 1B Tier 1 is broad, right? So it's, it's, you know, I think it's people of all ages that are in these sectors. And, and a lot of the reason why these sectors are being prioritized is because they are like essential workers, they're frontline, they don't exactly have the luxury to telework. You know, there's, they are frontline-facing professions. So I think that, you know, that's, the whole idea is to decrease transmission in this group to protect, to also protect those that are 65-plus who are more likely to have hospitalizations or deaths as a result of COVID-19. to protect, to also protect those that are sixty five plus who are more likely to have hospitalizations or deaths as a result of COVID nineteen.
Thank you. I just had one more quick question about the second shot and the communication. Is there going to be a standard way that people hear about when they get their shot? That's the same, you know, whether it's whatever the healthcare entity is. I can imagine a lot of people are going to feel anxiety, especially as this comes out that they don't know if there is a second shot and there's going to be a lot of fear. So I'm wondering how that communication is going to work.
Yeah, so we've been, um, you know, keeping, we have a list of people that got first shots. And I, you know, I know that St. Helena Hospital Foundation has done the same thing. And, you know, we're scheduling them out. We're, we're going ahead and scheduling the clinics. And, um, you know, I think that we are, you know, I think there's a lot of, we have a call center that's communicating with people as, as we make those appointments. You know, I think we're, we're having to make some strategic decisions on, um, you know, possibly going dark and not doing any more first doses because we need to make sure that we have enough second doses to completely immunize people that got the first dose. So there's, there's some really tough decisions at play. And then I think the other, the other thing is that we're trying to really push for more doses because we can't leave people half immunized at this point. You know, so I mean, people need their second doses. So I think we're trying to really push on that. And it might get to the point where we may have to borrow from our healthcare entities if they are sitting on doses. I mean, that's literally kind of where, uh, where things are at. So, yeah, we, it's, it's pretty much day by day. Like, you know, we, it's week by week. So we figure out today how many doses we're going to get from the state next week. And then we have to order it by the end of the day Thursday. And then, then the doses come on Monday and Tuesday. So it's literally, we can't plan for, you know, way out. And so that's, that makes things challenging as well because we don't know what our supply is going to be.
And Dr. Lucio, the best way for folks to get into the system in the queue for vaccination is the county website with the vaccine interest form, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And, um, so if you go to countyofnapa.org, there in the splash page, it says back. The first thing you see is vaccination, just click into it. And then it'll lead you to a vaccine interest form and it's a big brown button. And and then you can press in that and then you can fill out the form. And we are keeping, you know, um, we've had over four, like about forty thousand people sign up for vaccine. Not all of them are going to fit the priority tiers. So, you know, we're trying to part, um, there's a lot of sorting of the list by tiers or phases as well as by age. And then also we do get people that sign up that are, that don't live in our county nor do they work in our county. So there's a lot of, you know, um, there's, there's going to, there's some filtering that has to happen. Uh, and then if people got their doses elsewhere, we try, you know, we try to get them off the list to reduce the list, but it's still a lot of people.
Okay, but we'll keep encouraging people to get on that list and to, to share that, that link so, so more people can, can sign up.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other council questions or comments at this point? I'm seeing, oh, I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Thank you, Dr. Lucio. I always appreciate your cogent comments. I'm wondering, uh, it, it seems as though the federal government seems to be more focused on age categories. And on the local level, you take that into account, but you also are focusing in on certain work, workers, healthcare workers, essential workers, educators. And so there's, there's, it seems like a little balance there. The feds are saying, hey, focus on sixty five. Your, your organization is saying seventy five first, but then we all, we also are folding in some of the essential workers and teachers. And so if somebody was to come to you and say, wait a minute, I'm sixty six. I haven't gotten a vaccine, but my neighbor is a teacher and they have. How do you, how do you reconcile that? Or what is, what is your answer to that kind of a question?
Yeah, I'm, that's a really good question. I think that, um, you know, it's a part of it's ever changing guidance. So that was not the original intent of, you know, the original, um, the original way that the guidance was written was different before. So now that we're prioritizing sixty five plus, we're kind of doing a mix because we're still expected to do the sectors as well as prioritizing sixty five plus. So I think that, uh, you know, some of the rationale behind vaccinating those in essentials in certain sectors is because of the risk that they're, they're more at risk of transmitting COVID nineteen. So we're trying to stop transmission as well as decreasing the severity of COVID nineteen disease in certain vulnerable populations.
And I would add, for example, maybe I'm biased. I'm married to a teacher. The one thing that is important to note is the schools are open. And it may not be that way around the rest of the country where they're looking more at age. Our schools are open, so that may be another factor I hope that you're taking into consideration.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, with, we're, with trying to allocate scarce vaccine resources, you know, I have asked the school districts or the schools to focus on your staff who are actually in class and doing teaching because they're going to take priority over somebody that's deciding to do, you know, um, remote, remote teaching. So those are some examples of where you could prioritize within even one employer workplace.
Dr. Lucio, I'd like to thank you for your service under very difficult times. And you're facing pressures from a lot of different constituencies and you're holding your own. So I'm very proud of you and thank you so much for what you do for our county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council questions or comments? Seeing none, I will say thank you very, very much, Dr. Lucio. And please continue with the good, hard work and we'll all stay focused and get through this together. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, we'll bring it back now. We appreciate that. And once again, the, uh, the COVID interest form is on the county website that there's a phone number there as well. Seven oh seven two five three four five four zero. Once again, two five three four five four zero for information. With that, we're going to move now to our public forum. This is where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at any meeting. And brief questions by council members for clarifications may be posed and answered. And council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas. But in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. I'm going to look to our city clerk Cindy Schaffopolis to see if we have any hands for public forum.
I am looking and I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, very good. We'll move now to our reports by staff and city council, future agenda items and AB twelve thirty four reports. This is reports by staff and or council members on items of general interest. Brief questions for, again, maybe posed for clarification and answered. And, uh, I'll start with our city attorney, uh, Mr. Walsh, Ethan Walsh. Am I, oh, here we are. Mr. Walsh, can you hear me?
Frozen.
Oh, okay. Well, let's move then to our city manager, Mark Presswich.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to provide a brief update on the storm tonight. This is a storm event that we anticipate will bring today, really between tonight, now and the end of the evening, about two inches of rain, a little over two inches of rain. And there have been some developing communications over the last hour and a half. And I want to share a little bit of that with everyone. The heavy rainfall, uh, the concern is, uh, the concern is related to the burn scars from the glass fire in the LNU complex, the Hennessy Fire. And the heaviest rain is expected tonight between ten PM and two AM. The National Weather Service has issued a high wind warning that begins at midnight tonight and that ends at noon tomorrow. The National Weather Service has also issued a flash flood watch for the LNU lightning complex and the glass fire burn scars from Tuesday today at four PM through four PM on Thursday. We do have additional rain planned over the next couple of days. A flash flood watch is issued when conditions are favorable for flooding. It does not mean that flooding will occur, but it is, that it is possible. The county shortly before five PM tonight issued an evacuation warning indicating that there was a potential threat to life on their property. This is what happens in the context of a flash flood watch. In contrast, a flash flood warning, this is an upgraded category for flash flood concerns is issued when a flash flood, a flash flooding event is imminent or occurring. And when the National Weather Service upgrades a flash flood watch to a flash flood warning based on their observed, their observed precipitation, they send a wireless emergency alert message to cell phones in the impacted areas through mobile carriers. These alerts are distinct from regular text messages in that they feature a special tone and vibration. Both are repeated twice. The message will typically show the type and the time of the alert, the agency issuing the alert and any action the, the agency advises the public to take in response. The National Weather Service has advised that rainfall thresholds that they're tracking may trigger the issuance of a flash flood warning sometime overnight tonight. And that would affect residents in impacted areas. So when you overlay the, the boundaries of the fire, obviously the watershed is quite significant that a comment that endured the fire. Where we do have portions of the city on the east and the west that touch the edges of those fires and, and areas near creeks, particularly York Creek. That would be, those are the areas that we're watching and monitoring. And anyone in that area should be more careful this evening as we move into the, the heavier portions of this storm. Uh, our public works department, uh, we issued a press release yesterday indicating that there were sandbags available. We know some members of the public took part in that. Our public works department will, and our police and fire departments will be monitoring the situation through the evening and through the coming days. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have about this event tonight.
Do we have any questions from the council on tonight's and the storm issues over the coming days here? Okay, not seeing any. I think that's pretty comprehensive. I know that our, our fire and police, uh, emergency services, everybody's keeping a very close watch. So I, I know that I, our community can feel that, uh, our staff, emergency services are paying very, very close attention. So thank you. So with that, then I'll move to Dr. Mitz, our finance director, any reports?
Yes, thank you, Mary Alzwerth and council members. Just two quick report outs tonight is that over the weekend, the first utility bills under our new software system were mailed out to all residents or anyone who has a utility account with us. We did take extra precautions to scrutinize every single bill. But if anybody has any questions on their billing statement they receive, please make sure that you reach out to our department. In addition, included in the utility bill insert was a letter. And it's hard to talk about right after, uh, city manager Presswich talks about, um, some strong storm events going on right now. But we are still in a phase two water emergency. And part of what we do in the phase two is we do need to survey how many people are in the residential households for the per day allocation. So, um, please pay attention to that. There is, we made it as easy as possible. There's an online survey that can be taken. If you go to www.cityofstanhelena.org forward slash water survey. So again, it's going to our regular website, www.cityofstanhelena.org forward slash water survey. Or we tried to make it even easier. We, we now have a hot topics icon button icon on our website. So if you go to the city's website, on the left hand side towards the bottom, you'll see hot topics. Click on that and if you scroll down to the bottom, it will have water phase two emergency. You can simply click that link and there's a spot where you can click and access the survey there. We can definitely take surveys, um, either dropping them off at city hall or mailing them or completing this really easy survey. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm seeing Ms. Chateau with a hand up.
I just have one quick clarifying question. Is there a part, a place in the survey that you could enter that you have a live, a, a care person that comes for you all day that might not live with you overnight? Or let's say, you know, a babysitter that's in the house all day long.
There is not. It just asks how many people are in the household.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Mitz?
So just to be, just to be clear on that last point, there is nothing to preclude somebody who has a caretaker living relatively full time in the house from counting that person as a household member, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Uh, we'll move to our city clerk, Ms. Schaffopolis.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody, um, we have a lot of attendees at our council meeting tonight, which is fantastic. And I just want to remind the community that we are still looking for some ATSC members. And so they can apply, they can reach out to me, they can give me a call or the application is on our website. And so we will take applications until the committee has been filled. I also want to point out that MVTA also has an active transportation committee. And each jurisdiction gets to have a member on that committee. And St. Helena has a vacancy. And so if someone would like to apply to represent the city of St. Helena on the NVTA Active Transportation Committee, I would welcome a application for that as well. I have nothing else to report.
So that active transportation sustainability, those committees, both city and county, that, that offers some really great opportunity for looking at innovative steps forward. So hopefully we get some folks from the community. I wanted to ask with our, our ATSC here in St. Helena for clarification, there's some capacity for folks who don't live in city limits, is that right? That some, some folks who are in the vicinity could also be on that, that committee?
That is very true. It would be up to the council. It council has the discretion to appoint someone that lives outside of the jurisdiction.
Great, thank you. So somebody who's in the proximity, but not necessarily the city limits has an opportunity there. So I just want to put that out there as well. Thank you. Uh, and so now we'll move to our public works, Ms. Smithies. And perhaps she's frozen on the screen. I'm not sure. So let's see, with that, then I will return to Mr. Walsh to see if he has come on.
Thank you. Yes, I'm, I'm back, so I can, uh, substitute until Ms. Smithies gets back on. I, I did have one brief report on, since our last regular council meeting on Thursday, January fourteenth, we had a special closed session on existing litigation. Um, and there was no reportable action from that, uh, from that meeting. And that is all I had to report. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And I'm seeing Ms. Smithies now is with us, uh, any reports this evening?
Thank you. Sorry about that. I was trying to click my phone because we had a power glitch. So, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I have nothing to report. Mr. Presswich already touched on what Public Works is doing to prepare tonight for the storm. Thank you.
Very good. And then I will move to, uh, Ms. DeRosa, planning and building.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
I wanted to just ask one question. Folks who are looking towards recovery as we move through the COVID situation, businesses downtown, folks that have thoughts on how and they want to configure as we reopen, is the best way just to get in touch with the planning department directly? If they have, uh, things that they want to present in terms of getting approval?
Yes, absolutely. They can, um, contact us via email or our phone numbers are on the website as well. And we'd be happy to help them and answer their questions.
Great. So yeah, just want to let folks know that, that reaching out as we move forward and try to get everybody into recovery. If folks have questions or want to present something, please do so. Please make contact with the city. We want to work with everybody to get everybody up and running and moving smoothly here. So thank you. Um, and then I will circle in with our police and fire. I'm seeing Chief Hartley and I'm not sure if Chief Sorenson is still with us on the call here. I've seen Chief Sorenson as well.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. City manager Mark Presswich pretty much covered the, um, weather situation. I just wanted to add to use extreme caution if you have to be out driving in this mess. And if you're planning on traveling over the mountain tonight, it's currently snowing and it's been snowing on Mount St. Helena for over an hour now. Have a good evening.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that information. I think that is important for folks to know.
I head home now.
Chief Sorenson, anything to add to the earlier report from the city manager?
Mark. Presswich hit on everything. Just add. All the cities and the county has stepped up and staffed engines. Two engines are staffed up for this mud debris flow. One engine in St. Helena, one in Yountville. One in Napa and then one in American Canyon for additional response, quick response.
Great, thank you. Thank you both. Chief Hartley, Chief Sorenson for, for staying focused on the issues as they come up. We really appreciate it. And so with that, then we'll move on to our council members. Council member Hall.
Nothing to report. I, I just wanted to ask, I was just thinking. During the fire event, I think the, the state was really responsible for. The evacuation warnings and communications. Is the state. Responsible for doing that here again, or do we have quite a bit more local control in this type of event? Whomever.
Would be, it, this would be a local, if there was a local problem, then it would be local. It would have to be a major event to call in a. Yeah.
Thank you.
And council member Chateau.
Thank you. I did want to bring up that I would, I've been surprised by. The property that's going up on the walking path. On Adams, I see that quite a bit and I was wondering if there's council support. To consider the rules and regulations of a property build on our A20 zone. I was able to talk to Planning Director DeRosa and City Manager Presswich. Who had one idea that this could be referred to the ad hoc committee. That's going to be working on the zone code update. We're going to be choosing that later as the last item of our agenda tonight. So I've seen if there's other council support for looking at this.
Certainly, and I think that. That, that will tie into the, we can tie that into the conversation later this evening. Is, is that my understanding?
Well, it would be something that we could look at, the ad hoc committee could look at with staff. Through that committee. That's a way to look at it and get more information and have a discussion about it with the consultant and more information provided. So not tonight, but it would be added as a work item on that ad hoc committee.
I'd be supportive of that.
I support it as well. I, I. Believe. I expressed some interest in seeing that code section amended when we approved. That home on the commission. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And so any other comments, Ms. Chateau?
I'm just that I also attended the Blue Zone discussion from St. Helena Hospital. I don't know if it was the hospital or the foundation. And it was a very hopeful, exciting conversation about what could be done in our community. For the health and wellbeing of all the residents. So more to come, but I did attend that and I believe that there were some other council members. Mayor, maybe vice mayor on it as well. I couldn't tell, but I did see a chat or two.
Thank you. Mr. Hardy. Do we have any reports?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Doring.
I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take a moment as we move out of last year and into this year. I, I've. I put together some certificates of appreciation and gratitude to our. Our police department, our fire department and our city staff. Tonight is another night where we see these incredible people stepping up once again. When something is challenging to our town. It's, it's been. It's been month after month. It's been a year of incredible work and effort. I've, I've put these together separately and I will drop them by and bring them by these certificates. I just want to briefly go over them because I want to recognize the work. And so I'm going to start with just a, a little bit of reading about, about some of my thoughts. And then, and leave it there, but I, I don't want this, this moment to pass, this year to pass. Without you as, as folks who work. For the city, with the city, how much you mean to us and, and how your, how your work has gotten us through this remarkable time. So I'm just going to start here. In St. Helena. We feel protected, safe and secure because of the work you do and your commitment to this community. It is the work of our St. Helena city staff and your commitment to this community. Both as individuals and within your departments that greatly ensures this stability. You ensure the daily order and structure of the community, including our safety, our health. And protecting the financial investment in our community. St. Helena has $2.5 billion in assessed property value. With billions more supported by our St. Helena water system. And your efforts day after day, year after year. Protect that daily order and financial investment, both for our residents and our businesses. Most importantly, your efforts ensure and protect the dreams and future of this community. The people who live here, the families, the children, the parents. The people who have businesses, the seniors who give us wisdom. The next generation who give us hope and inspire all our efforts. This is the priceless past, present and future that your efforts protect. Please feel your true and extraordinary value to our city and community. And, and all that you inspire here. It is your work ethic, your courage, your ingenuity, your steadfastness that carry us forward each day. It is your persistence, your teamwork, your dedication. And as we saw in the recent fires. And, and day to day, the willingness to risk your lives for our community that confirm you as true heroes of St. Helena. As a community, we are deeply obliged to you. In 2020, we had many extra challenges as we faced a global pandemic, global civil unrest. And a nationwide scrutiny of public policy and procedure rate related to race relations and police procedure. As well as large scale fire danger that came very close to St. Helena. And, and was here. Through all this, you went above and beyond to protect our town, our administrative capacity and our stability. Even in these most challenging of circumstances, you remain true and stalwart in your service to our community. Helping St. Helena navigate calmly, peacefully and in good order. You've been extraordinary in your composure and in your service. As COVID-19 slowed down most people's lives, it greatly increased the workload on our public servants such as yourselves. Who also have homes and families. I want to recognize the sacrifices and dedication exhibited by all of you, both personally and in your departments. I was raised to avoid being a prideful person. But as the mayor of St. Helena, it is impossible not to feel heartfelt and resounding pride in our incredible St. Helena staff and employees. It has been an honor to serve with you during these most remarkable times. And as with these thoughts that I want to present you with this statement of deep gratitude and appreciation. On behalf of myself as a resident of St. Helena and as mayor of St. Helena. For all your efforts in 2020 and for all that you continue to do. I, I, I want to leave that with you and I will bring that, that by in the next few days and, and hope that, that you feel our deep gratitude. So thank you. With that, I want to just make a few notes as we move into the new year. We'll be getting into our goal setting soon. Personally, I want to step forward looking at housing issues. I want to make sure we're, we're, we're working towards our housing goals and beyond. I want to work towards our, our social and racial equity goals. I want to be talking about the pride flag. I want to be talking about inclusion. I want to be talking about our climate issues. I want to be talking about climate as it relates to water and our waste management. I want to be talking about community health. That includes community mental health. And, and, and family health. I want to be talking about how we serve our youth. So that we give them a foundation and a platform so they can reach for the stars as we move forward. So those are my, my thoughts tonight as we get started. I want to just recognize the work in the last year and know we have much more to do. And with that, I will. Then we will start moving into our consent items. And with one final thank you, I do also again want to thank the St. Helena Hospital and Foundation for. For their work and stepping up with this vaccination program. So thank you. And. With that, we'll now move now into our staff briefings. And this is where Ms. Smithies will help us. Get into our monthly water update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as Dr. Mitz provided earlier. The surveys and the notifications that were out, went out in the finance billings for our phase two emergency. We do have good weather forecasting coming ahead despite the concerns about, about burn scars and, and moderate atmospheric rain. This is the kind of rain that fills up our reservoirs. So we're hoping that this week. We may see a big dent and, and or at least partial dent in our water supply at Bell Canyon and Lower Reservoir. And that we'll have a better update next month since we're entering a real weather pattern here finally. And have a better update coming into February. And I mean, we haven't had a change much from the last report two weeks ago of 34.6%. Capacity at Bell Canyon, river low 25% reserve at Lower Res for raw water.
Oh, we might have lost. Let's see. I think we, Erica might have frozen there. So we can return back when she comes back. One thing I did want to make sure we mentioned, I think it was, but. Sandbags and the sandbag stations at the east end of Adam Street and at Crane Park by the primary school folks. As this rain comes down, if they need sandbags, it's a self-service sand pile there, both those locations. So I want to mention those. And, you know, having, if the power goes out, making sure to have devices charged, flashlights available, grab and go kits ready. And if there's a power outage, can, folks can report to PG&E. The outage. So with that, I see Erica's dropped off. And so we were planning to have her do our wastewater treatment plant. Upgrade as well, update as well. I hear you now. Great. Okay.
I said, the wind is, is very forceful. I tried to click my phone earlier. It didn't work, but I'm, I'm not sure where I dropped off with the water update. But let's just hope that we can get out of this maybe in the next month and I'll put my next update. As far as the wastewater, next month, we're planning on bringing 100% plans and a Sequa NIPA document to council for adoption. And authorizing advertisement of bids. So that's our biggest update with the wastewater treatment plant.
Great. And that's excellent to see that moving forward. Are there any questions from council on these two items for Ms. Smithies? I'm seeing Ms. Chateau.
Just real quick, what is the amount of inches that we're hoping for in the next month to get out of the phase two?
Well, we've only had a little over five inches to date. So, you know, to get out of phase two, it could be five inches. It depends. It depends on how much we get at once. Not as far as at once, but like a back to back storms. We get moderate atmospheric rain now and we continue to get some steady rainfall through this weekend. That'll help with the continued runoff into Bell Canyon and to Lower Reservoir. So it's really telling how the weeks to come has, as the storms build back to back.
Thank you.
How full is the reservoir now, Erica?
It's, I believe it's held steady from 34.6% that it was two weeks ago.
How full does it have to be for us to end phase two?
It, it changes per month that we enter into this. So I was trying to, we have a modeling, an Excel spreadsheet, but it's smart. It, it won't give you like a, if I do it today, it won't tell me. You have to wait till February 1st and it'll give me an update. We had a really good safety old committee member. Put some, you know, background modeling into his macros. So. I'll keep trying to see. I keep trying to play with the numbers to see, but I believe you need to be above 40%. It'd be nice to be above there next month.
Thank you.
Okay. And we're going to touch on an item later that's going to relate back to the treatment plant. Are there any other questions on the water or wastewater before we move forward? Seeing none. I thank you very much. And I, that wastewater treatment plant upgrade is, is. We've been working towards that and it's great to see it's coming forward. So thank you. We'll now move to our consent items. This is where members of the council or public may ask that any items be considered individually. For purpose of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. And so I'm going to read through the item, the numbers. And if anybody would like one pulled. Please put a hand up and we'll pull that. So I'm going to start with 8.1. I'm going to move to 8.2. 8.3. 8.4. And 8.5. Seeing no hands, I will then entertain a motion to pass the consent calendar.
I move that we pass the consent calendar.
Okay.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Chateau?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. We'll move down the calendar or the agenda now to item 10 in Old Business. We'll move to item 10.1. This is the annual Elm Tree Tunnel Update and Presentation by Hort Science, Division of Bartlett Consulting on one, the updated tree risk. An advanced assessment of 30 mature elms. And two, a review of updated Elm Tree Management Plan. And Mr. Belt, Martin Beltran will send. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking at Carlos Uribe. I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong spot. Carlos, thanks for being here. I appreciate it.
No problem, no problem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So I'm going to give a brief update again on the Elm Tree Tunnel and then again, followed by the presentation. So the update is very brief. We will be having our merit soil drench injection, sorry, soil drench. This week is scheduled. It actually, these drains actually do help. As the soil drenched and the, and the excess rain will help pull that treatment down into the roots. And then we're also slated to have our annual meeting with Caltrans. But again, that's going to be. Weather pending because we know with the storms are going to be pretty much booked and we like to meet with their superintendent and their. Their gentleman who does their tree division work. So that's going to be coming up. As far as the report goes. Again, this is going to be the update to the tree assessment. I believe last year council asked us to follow up on 30 more trees. Mature trees and do an advanced assessment. And. So that part will be done by John Lefton. And I'd like to just mention that this is going to be a receive and file item. We will be using the Elm Tree Management Plan as our, the goal is to use that plan as our. Kind of, you'll, you'll hear from John as our treatment in those trees from. Cradle to grave. So he did a really good job with the presentation as you'll see. And there's a really exciting portion of here on page three, which. It's contains a section will be involving our community. And we'll be working with that down the road here with specifically engaging our beautification foundation. So stay tuned for that. As it is a very neat opportunity to, for the community to get involved and participate in preserving our elm trees. And with that, I pass the presentation on to John Lefton.
Good evening, Mayor Ellsworth and council members. Thank you for having me. I do. I think Preya is going to start that. Great. All right. Well, this is just the intro slide, a little high level review because this is obviously a fairly tight presentation. So in addition to the information I'm presenting here, the management plan. The Elm Tunnel Management Plan that Carlos referred to that was presented. To Carlos earlier this year provides a lot of detail specifications, best management practices. As well as a lot of supporting documentation for each section. So I'm going to. Despite the density of the individual slides, I am going to try and go through this fairly quickly. So. Thank, thank you again for having me. A little bit of background. In 2019, Hort Science Bartlett Consulting prepared the risk assessment for the Elm Tunnel manage, Elm Tunnel. Out of that came some recommendations that the city consider having us perform these advanced assessments on 30 trees where. Decay was identified or suspected. We were also to prepare updated risk ratings for those 30 trees based on the results of the advanced assessment. And a five, 10 and 15 year removal prioritization. As well as this management. as well as this management plan from cradle to grave for all of the trees. So the advanced assessments were performed in the summer of twenty twenty and the updated risk assessment was provided to the, to to Carlos in October and the Elm Tunnel Management Plan was recently submitted, reviewed and finalized. So I'm going to focus first on the results of the advanced assessments. Then I'll move into the Elm Tunnel Management Plan Recommendations. Advanced assessments, as I said, were, next slide, Preya, thank you. Assessments were performed on those trees where internal decay was identified or where defects were present, but couldn't be adequately inspected from the ground. You can see an image here of one of the aerial inspections we performed. So advanced assessments involved aerial inspections, the use of this resistograph decay detection device. The resistograph is basically a drill that pushes a very fine needle into the tree and registers the resistance of the wood. You can see the small graph at the bottom of the screen is an example of resistograph reading where the, where the graph is rising, that is the needle passing through solid or sound wood. Where it's falling or flat, that would be a cavity or area of decay. And so the, the goal was to look at these thirty trees and see what their risk rating was with this additional information of, of how much internal decay was present. And so next slide. So again, based on the results of the advanced assessment, the risk ratings were adjusted for eleven trees. And one of the other goals from this advanced assessment was to then provide a five, ten and fifteen year removal priority. So I identified nine priority one trees, nine priority two trees and eleven priority three trees for removal. And I ordered the priority one trees based on the risk rating, the consequences of if they fell, as well as their health and structure. Priority two and three removals weren't prioritized because we expect they're that they will, they will get adjusted over time as more information is, is gathered. So one of the other goals of the, of the advanced assessments was to help identify groups of two to four trees, small groups that could be removed at one time. That would provide better growing conditions for the new elm trees, the replacement Elms. And that did require in some instances, and you can move to the next slide, Preya. That did require in some instances, and I will say, if you look at this first group of tree, one, two, three and four, trees two and three, I believe are the priority one trees. In order to create a group of four trees there, I recommended removing two of the priority three trees. So these groups were focused on priority one trees, but also included adjacent priority two and three trees in order to create a little gap that would provide the best growing conditions for, for the new trees. Next slide. So on to the Elm Tunnel Management Plan Recommendations. And as I said, this is a pretty high level review. This is a thirty to fifty page document with all the supporting information. So there's a lot there to cover in a short time. Our vision for the, for the Elm Tunnel was really to sustain the integrity of the tunnel for future generations by removing and replacing the declining and high-risk trees and protecting the new trees from injury. One of the other visions is to manage the trees to minimize the risk of damage to people or property, of course. And we do that through regular inspections and maintenance, which the city is already doing some of. Foster tree health and structural stability to prolong the life of individual trees. Excuse me, as well as engage with the community through existing community and social media groups and using innovative approaches seen in other cities such as New York and Melbourne. And I think this is part of what Carlos was referring to. There are quite a few opportunities out there for, especially with the technology we have, for ways to engage the community and get them interested and involved in maintenance, not maintenance, but the, the history and the future of the Elm Tunnel. So I think that there's a lot of opportunity and I can certainly speak more to that. So in terms of plant procurement, our recommendations is really to have the Dutch Elm Disease Resistant Trees contract grown. That helps to assure quality of plant material as well as consistent availability. We would further recommend selecting one cultivar for consistency of form and appearance across the grove. And we, we recommend the city inspect the trees prior to acceptance, looking at the vigor form and structure of the tree as well as root health and architecture. And you can see on this slide, this image of selecting a quality plant at the nursery was, was one of the, the pieces that was included as supporting material and gives a quick visual of what you're looking for when, when looking at new trees at the nursery. Next slide. So in terms of planting, we recommend that you prepare the planting site, not just the actual planting hole, but the whole site by loosening soil beyond the actual planting hole. Excavate the planting hole two to three times as wide and one and a half times as deep as the, the root ball. Of course, in order to determine the actual depth of the root ball, you need to expose the root flare. And this is what this image here shows. Often trees that come from the nursery are buried two, three, four inches deep as the tree is transplanted and soil is added. So you have to expose that root flare so you know how deep to plant the tree and you aren't just prolonging the burying of the tree. We recommend you amend the backfill soil, plant the tree, build a soil berm that will help retain the irrigation water. Stake the tree and apply coarse wood chip mulch. The wood chip mulch is really an important piece. It does not, it does help retain soil moisture as well as regulate soil temperatures. So especially for new trees where they don't have a lot of roots and you know, drying soil can really affect them. So the mulch layer can add quite a bit of protection. Tree spacing and location, and you know, this is a question that is really that is really constrained, excuse me, by the National Historic Landmark Designation of the trees. Meaning you may not be able to change the spacing or location of these trees, but it's worth investigating. Because currently the spacing has produced trees that are fairly asymmetric. Lot of branches over Highway twenty-nine as well as the pedestrian path. And the proximity to Highway twenty-nine has resulted in quite a bit of trunk damage where the trees have been hit by vehicles. So anything we could do to increase spacing between the trees would promote a better health and structure of the individual tree. And anything we could do to move them further from the edge of the road would minimize the chances of them getting hit and decay becoming established. Next slide. So irrigation practices, again, the city is currently applying about ten gallons a week during the dry summer months. And that's what we're recommending, of course, is irrigation during the dry summer months. And the general recommendation is not to change the volume of irrigation, but in the first year to apply those ten gallons to, in two separate applications. Second year, apply the ten gallons once a week. Third year, fifteen gallons, but increase the frequency, I'm sorry, decrease the frequency to every two weeks. And after three years, the tree should really be fairly well established. And we would expect only, only during the most extreme droughts would additional irrigation be required. And I will, I will bring to your attention this note that's shown on the slide. That's one of the kinds of supporting documents we provided as part of this report is a simple one-page sheet that you can look at, that staff could look at, could be in the shop or in the truck. And have a very clear and understandable directive on, on how best to irrigate the trees. Next slide. So I think that pruning of young trees is perhaps one of the most important, if not the most important maintenance activities we can prescribe for these trees. Ideally, when we have a good contractor providing nursery grown trees, the health and structure of the trees is consistent and high quality. But as always, we need to consider how proper pruning or improper pruning will affect the structure of these trees. So we recommend pruning the young trees at the time of planting and every, every year for five to ten years. Now that, that sounds like a lot, but in reality, not every tree is going to require pruning every year. And every pruning should require only a handful, one to three cuts per tree, really. So the goals of the pruning of the young trees is really about selecting a single central leader, selecting a lowest permanent branch and selecting main scaffold branches. And as always, sanitation of equipment between pruning, between trees, between pruning trees is critical to avoid moving Dutch Elm disease from tree to tree. Next slide. So overall, again, the city is doing an appropriate approach, using an appropriate approach to control Dutch Elm disease. It's a fungal pathogen that can get spread by beetles. The beetles feed on the trees during the spring typically. So we need to manage both beetles as well as apply fungicides to minimize the, the risk of Dutch Elm disease really getting a hold. So again, the city is really, is really using the best management practices currently. But as always, there are a lot of alternatives out there, some of them unproven. So I think that it's always wise to be keeping your ear to the ground and working with those contractors who are aware of and can implement the, the latest and best practices. Some of these are novel and efficacy may not be proven yet. So next slide. And I would say after pruning of young trees, I would consider protecting the trees from injury. One of your next most important activities. Many of the trees have been hit by cars or appear to have been hit by cars. That wounds the tree and those wounds become points for potential decay. And when you have a wound like you can see on this tree in the upper right, you know, that's not going to heal over. Decay is going to become established. And eventually that tree will fail as a result of instability in the truck, in, in the trunk, excuse me. So I would highly recommend considering, there are two primary recommendations here, considering ways to protect the, the trees from injury, trunk damage, whether that's bollards or large stones or some kind of decorative item that could be placed and protect the trees as well as coordinating pruning of the trees. The west side of the, of the row is topped annually or more than once a year for utility line clearance. That can, especially if done in the summer, that can expose the soft wood, the, you know, the, the unprotected wood to sun scalded. Sun scald burns the, the tissue and that can lead to decay. So again, some coordination with utility may prove beneficial, especially with the new elm trees coming in on that west side to avoid some of that damage. Sucker management is a big deal with the Elms because they are prolific root sprouters and damage to the roots produces these suckers. And these suckers can compete with the new young trees for resources. So it is a big deal and they do need to be managed. Of course, doing, due to the potential for root grafting between the trees, we cannot just treat those suckers with herbicide, for instance. So the mechanical approach that the city is using currently is the most appropriate and we would recommend continuing with that approach, whether that's mowing or weed eating those suckers down to the ground in the spring. That will, that should be sufficient for an annual approach. Next slide. Okay, again, a very dense slide. You know, the bottom line is we recommend ongoing monitoring of the trees. Ideally, the city designates a, you know, an experienced staff member who has familiarity with the trees to do biannual monitoring of the trees every, twice a year, excuse me. And that would be someone who's familiar with the trees and can, can recognize changes in their health and condition. We recommend maintaining records of those inspection dates, the personnel who perform the inspections, their ratings of individual trees and actions taken. And then the second part of ongoing monitoring is periodic risk assessments like Hort Science performed last year. And we recommend, of course, that you guys hire someone qualified. The industry standard is currently the tree risk assessment qualification. And, and you need that really to, to be able to perform the latest best management practice and industry standard of risk assessment. And one of the final recommendations in terms of risk assessment is the, the city can consider developing a, a tree risk management program that outlines how the city is going to deal with risk management, thresholds for action, who, who to call, who's responsible, et cetera. And that is a, really a programmatic document and gives the city a very defensible position as to how, how they go about managing these trees. Okay, next slide, please. This is really the final slide, so I'll wrap up here. Pruning and removal of mature Elms, really this should be driven by those ongoing monitoring. So you monitor the trees and update their condition. And based on the results of those things, if there are big dead branches over the roadway, that's a tree that needs to be pruned. If there are trees that are in decline or posing high risk, those are trees that will need to be removed. And so ongoing monitoring will inform the pruning and removal, future pruning and removal of the Elms. Now I have given you guys a five, ten and fifteen year removal prioritization. But again, those priority two and three trees, you may have a priority three tree that turns the corner and declines quickly. That might make it a priority two tree. So because these are biological systems, you know, there's going to be ongoing monitoring and response to that monitoring. And the final piece is wood reuse. You know, there's going to be a lot of wood that comes out of the trees despite the amount of decay present. And so we would recommend the city plan to reuse as much of the wood as possible. Chipping and wood chips from the diseased trees can be used around the new trees. What I have found through the research I've done is that there's no evidence that these, the, the small microorganism fungi's can last in wood chips. That they're, they really invade through other, other systems. So chipping and using that wood around the trees is acceptable. And then I think finally, we would recommend considering alternative ways to create souvenirs, to create art or historic installations that could educate the public. Some of these trees, well, all of the trees, mature Elms at least are, you know, a hundred and forty years old. And so there are trees there where you may be able to get a, what they call a cookie or a round and polish that up and cross-date it. And you might be able to show significant dates in St. Helena's history, that kind of thing. So I think that there are some opportunities there for interesting and creative ways to reuse the wood. And I am going to end my presentation there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
John, that was fantastic. And, and this is such an important historical landmark in part of our town. And, and the thought and care put into this, I want to thank Carlos as well. This, this, it's so important to our community and, and looking at ways to preserve, protect and sort of enhance is wonderful. So I'm going to put it out for any thoughts, questions for the council and then we'll, we'll sort of see. we'll sort of see where we are. I just want to thank you for this really comprehensive look.
Thank you.
From our council, any questions or thoughts? I'm seeing Mr. Hall.
John, thank you very much. That was very well done. I had the opportunity to actually read through your detailed document. There's quite a bit there. I was curious what our next steps as a council is. Are we digesting his report and is our intent tonight to come up with, how are we going to staff and pay for tree management program or what, what's our plan? It wasn't clear in the staff.
Good questions. I don't know that I have the answer, but what I would recommend is, as an initial step, would be looking at the, the possibility of establishing a relationship with a grower so that you could have the tree's contract grown. That may be a one to two year lead time. So even if you establish that relationship today or tomorrow, you may not see trees coming from that individual or that nursery for a year or two. So that would be my first step. I would then probably start to engage the community. I think that that's going to be, you know, you don't want to leave that till the end, obviously. You want to get their buy-in and, and their support and their involvement as soon as possible. And then beyond that, I think a lot of what the city is already doing in terms of its program is best management practices. I think that there are areas for, for expanding that. And certainly we're here and happy to help in whatever way we can.
Thank you, John.
But there were no specific proposals for allocation of additional funds or next steps to hire us to do.
Right. Thank you.
And that recommendation on a, on a grower, finding a single grower to build a relationship with, that gives us a consistency with the tree, with the trees that we, we bring in.
Yes, and availability. I think one of the issues that the city has run into is they can't get the Dutch elm disease resistant trees. So it, it becomes difficult to have them ready when you want to plant.
Okay. Well, maybe the, the Asmath family has little room for elms at the end of the redwood forest out there.
We've got a couple of tree items on tonight. It's nice to have them together. We can, yeah, make that relationship.
That's right.
Any other council thoughts?
The city manager had something to add, I think.
I would just add, Councilmember Hall, to your question that this is really a terrific blueprint and it helps us on the management of the trees side of the house. But clearly there's some additional work to do on our end to get further organized based on the recommendations and the plan. And I'm excited about the public engagement ideas because there are some really terrific ideas and, and I think that there's certainly some very interesting opportunities in that vein.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you, Mark. I, I think it's a terrific project. I, I love hearing also that we're, we're doing a very good job right now, today. I like the whole community engagement aspect and some of your, your recommendations, some of the ideas, what other cities are doing. You know, there's all kinds of things that come to mind on how do we, how do we leverage this as one more of the incredible assets we have here to market, market St. Helena?
I think also we have an opportunity as we talk with the Vine Trail coming up and partners like the Vine Trail Partners in the, in that corridor that we can all work together. And as, as Eric was saying, some of the, the community engagement where we can showcase this. And I think like anything, if we give care and attention and foster it, it, we can just enhance it and, and bring it to its full splendor. So this is really a nice blueprint. So with that, city manager, so we make sure that we don't lose this off the radar. I know it's a receive and file report. Is there something we can do to, to ensure that we somehow circle back and stay moving forward?
Yes, I think with the coming discussion about goals and objectives and ensuring that there's continuity on that front, this is an item. We're going to be bringing you a variety of projects that are on the radar screen or in the queue. And this is one of those that will land on that list and be part of that conversation.
Great.
And we'll still have an opportunity for public comment as well.
Oh yes, okay, very good. So let's do that now. We'll open this up to public comment at this point and see if there are any hands on this
I'm looking and I'm not seeing any public comment. If we just want to give it a minute for folks to raise their hand.
In, in the meantime, I will just say how excited I have been to have the opportunity to work on this project. You know, I think there are very few cities in California who have that kind of history and can still, you know, look at trees that are 140 years old and were here when St. Helena was in its earliest days. So it's been a really exciting project. It's, you guys have been patient with me and I appreciate that. It's been a long project and so I, I want to thank you and, and say how fun it's been, interesting.
Thank you. We'll look, we'll look forward to the next steps and, and having you help us move forward. So thank you. Okay, with that, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back.
Hold on one second, hold on one second. I did see one earlier.
I'm seeing Judith on.
Oh, there she is, okay. Judith is raising her hand. Priya, I need your assistance.
Sure. So let me allow Judith, all right, Judith, you should be able to unmute yourself and And it will prompt you, I'm going to prompt you to unmute yourself. So it should be prompting you to unmute yourself and speak. There you go.
Hi, sorry. I just wanted to say, in the, in addition to, I think what we're going to hear from Paul Asmath, how much I appreciate the deep research that has been done to preserve the tree advocacy of our neighborhood. And it is a lot of science and forward thinking. And so I just wanted to express my gratitude to the team that has just spoken, as well as obviously to the Asmaths team who is going to speak further. So that was my message tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment and participation. Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back now to the council. If, are there any further thoughts here from the council before we move forward? I think we've got everything. Thank, oh, missing our vice mayor.
I would just add, so there are some larger budgetary and policymaking parameters that we have to deal with, but there's also some basic practical functional tasks that we could be doing now. So I want to feel confident that the city manager is able to assure the, us and our community that this information will be imparted to our staff so that they can do the basic pruning and mulching and watering and those recommendations with respect to the trees. And I think they probably have been doing a lot of that. There may be a few little areas that they can improve, but I want, it would be important to give us that assurance that we don't have to wait until a team building session to at least get that part started.
No, I, I provide you that assurance and we have a city arborist, that's Carlos Uribe, who initially presented tonight. And Carlos has been working hand in hand with Mr. Lefinwell. We're confident with the, the management side of the house. I think there's some good ideas that will require additional coordination with volunteer groups like the Beautification Foundation, really advancing some of these ideas. I personally really like the idea of birth certificates for the trees and some of the other creative ideas. And that, the, the purpose of making sure that we have a list of all of the balls that are in the air is to be sure that we don't lose focus on any of those. And, and I think there are so many interesting ideas that are recommended with this particular plan that weren't on our radar screen before. Those present opportunities for public engagement where we can work with our community to advance some of this with their assistance as well. So it won't be lost. We're really appreciative of the work to date and we're looking forward to the continuation of this effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, thank you, John and Carlos. Thank you very much and, and your continued work on this, really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Goodbye.
Bye.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on now to our final item this evening. And this is new business. This is item 11.1, and this is consideration of proposed expansion of the existing redwood forest at the wastewater treatment plant and direction to staff. This project is going to be presented by Priya Nixon, the assistant to the city manager.
Yes, good evening, everyone. And we are continuing our discussion about trees. So I am going to hand over shortly the presentation to Paul Asmath, who has just been wonderful. And I want to, if it's okay, just provide a little bit of background. I've mentioned this in my staff report, but for those who don't know, we're talking about a redwood forest that currently exists at the wastewater treatment plant in the spray field. And so in 2011, an experimental redwood forest of around 450 trees were planted on 1.5 acres on the southeast corner of the wastewater treatment plant. And so we're here tonight to talk about expanding that by 10 acres. And Paul has a wonderful presentation that he is going to give to everyone. We've also attached really good frequently asked questions and a very robust project description. So I would really encourage the folks who want to learn more to read that. And I've also attached the presentation as well, so folks have that too. I, I would like to just mention that this item actually went to the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee because we're talking about sustainability here. And the committee gave some feedback and generally very well received. Some concerns were brought up around how do we make sure that access to the forest is, right now I think you enter going through the wastewater treatment plant entrance, there are some other options for entering, but there's favorable support for the project. So I think it's important that I note that this did go to the ATSC. And then as we heard earlier from Director Smithies, the wastewater treatment plant is currently undergoing a redesign. And so we've been working and talking to Mr. Asmath about making sure that we have this, the, the plans for the wastewater treatment plant to be 100% approved, especially as it relates to the effluent and the discharge. So Paul's going to talk a little bit about the spray fields and what, and what that means. So again, I would encourage everyone to take a look at the attachments. And with that, I'm going to hand this over to Paul. And Paul, I'm going to bring up the presentation and you can just tell me to go to the next slide, but I would just like to say Paul has been really such a, such a wonderful person to communicate with on this and has provided really great information. And so, um, thank you, Paul, for being here today. And with that, let's see if I can share my screen. I'm going to put it in the presentation notes.
Before you jump in, Paul, I've got to make a correction. We have one item after this. We have our zoning code update item and that, my pages got stuck together. I just want to let the community know that. So, back to you, Priya.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Ellsworth and other city council members and city staff. I especially want to thank the city manager, Mark Presswork, Wick and the director of Public Works, Erica Smithies and, and Priya. And also, it hasn't been mentioned tonight, but the chief wastewater treatment plant operator, Eric Sanders, has been extremely helpful to us over these years and is doing a great job out there and helping us with the project. And also the community has been very supportive throughout this and we just are so appreciative of that. And now we, about a year and a half ago or so, the Napa Resource Conservation District joined us as, as a partner in helping us, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. And then recently Sustainable St. Helena, an environmental alliance will be the nonprofit for this project going forward. So we're really excited about that. I, I wanted to just, before we get into the slides, talk about this term, community forest, because we're going to, it's might be new to some people and, and what does it mean? And I, there's lots of definitions, but I liked the one that was on the CalFire website because this is becoming quite an important opportunity around the state of California. And there's not a lot of community forest in California, but it, they are very common around the world and in the United States. This is a definition of the, from the Aspen Institute. Community for, community based forestry is a participatory approach to forest management that strengthens communities' capacity to build vibrant local economies while protecting and enhancing their local forest ecosystems. By integrating ecological, social, and economic components into cohesive approaches to forestry issues, community based approaches give local residents both the opportunity and the responsibility to manage their natural resources effectively and to enjoy the benefits of that responsibility. So today I, we have the opportunity to look at where, where we've come since 2011 and the opportunity we have of forests going into the future. Okay, Priya, next slide. Priya, go ahead.
Hold on a second. There we go.
So this is the, I wanted to start with the overview of the, where we are. And the little yellow dot can show the, the location of the existing forest. And then you can see what looks like crop circles there in green. That looks like, that is where the effluent is sprayed today. And then just above that, the green ponds, those are the treatment ponds themselves. And I'm, if you were trying to orient exactly where this is, the street down at the bottom of the screen is Zinfandel Lane, that, and that's the intersection of Zinfandel and Silver Road or Trail. Okay, Priya. This is a slide that Amanda Benton, who is a forester with the Napa Resource Conservation District, has done such a great job of putting together. And it shows the, the, the big field area where the, where the effluent is sprayed today. And then it shows in the bright green, smaller section is where the current one and a half acres are. And then the yellow section is what is being proposed as an area of expansion. And then the white area down by the river is an area that the Napa Resource Conservation District is interested in extending the riparian area from the river and making one of their oak projects and, which is also, the whole area would be tied together. And, and then you can see we're surrounded by vineyards here in this, and that is one of the reasons why this area in yellow is being proposed, because there's no effluent sprayed in this area. This area is a fallow because you can't have any overspray from the secondary treated wastewater getting into the vineyards. Next slide, please. So we talked about how it all got started back in 2011 and the mayor, Brit, Mayor Del Britton, at that time, gave us permission to move forward with this small experimental forest. We didn't know how it would do. And in fact, the, all the first trees we planted in December of 2011 all died. It was very cold and the trees were from the Russian River area. And genetically, they just, the Russian River area doesn't get that kind of cold. Like this morning in our vineyard here, right off Silver Road or Trail near Pope Street, it was 21 degrees. So you, it's much, much colder out in those open fields than, than what people expect. So we came back in February of 2012 and planted 450 trees and those came from Humboldt County. And they were able to handle the cold much better than the trees that came from the Russian River area. The total effluent spray fields are about a 100 acres. And we talked about the, the vineyards along the, the edge. The, we're proposing to expand the, the end of the fallow land, it'd be about 3,000 coast redwood trees. And then... And then we would hope to start some in this year in 2021. And then this, I wasn't quite done. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, it's going rogue. Hold on one second. Hold on one second.
Okay, I have notes here. I can just.
I'm going to bring it up differently. Okay, I'm going to reshare it. Sorry about that, everyone.
Folks are known to go rogue in St. Helena.
All right, so I'm going to just keep it in this mode and then I'll just go to the next page. So let me know when you're ready.
Okay. And then some of the acreage would be set aside in what we're referring to as a legacy forest. And in the legacy forest, those would be trees that would never be harvested for timber. And they would sequester carbon and produce oxygen forever. And along the way, we were helped by Nick Kent, who's a registered professional forest, forester out of Cloverdale, and Dr. William Libby, who's a retired Berkeley professor and hugely instrumental in the coast redwood industry around the world. Okay, next slide. This is a photo of Dr. Libby. He came in 2015. He was very excited. He holds it up, he's holding up three fingers to say, "These trees are only three years old and look how big they are." And he was very excited. We had a great day. And he's been also instrumental in providing special clones for the project. And he's also was instrumental in establishing the redwood timber industry in New Zealand. Okay. I thought this was important for everybody to see that a few quotes regarding, well, why are we doing coast redwoods? Why, what about something else? Like the city of Eugene, Oregon, has their wastewater treatment plant. I think they have about 300 acres of poplar that they continually harvest for pulp. But these are some strong quotes about the redwood, California redwood trees are the best in the world at storing carbon dioxide. Their California's ancient redwood trees store more carbon dioxide per acre than any other forest in the world, including tropical rainforests like the Amazon. This is according to new research published in the Journal of Forestry, Ecology, and Management. I'm not going to read through all these quotes, because they're available on the presentation. But I think it's really important to understand why we are suggesting coast redwoods for the project. Okay. The, back in 2009, when we were first learning and thinking about this project, we had the opportunity to visit, this is the Green Diamond Nursery, where they grow over 1 million coast redwood trees a year. And you can see how small they start out on the left. And when you go to plant them in the field, they are the size of the little seedling there on your right. Okay. This is what the trees look like after a year in May of 2013. About 18 to 24 inches tall. And then by the end of that year, they were approaching several were three, three to five feet tall. So they can see how quickly they grow once they get established. Okay. Now, we're into the next year and the trees are two years old on the left and three years old on the right. So they went from six feet to eight to 10 feet in that next year. Okay. This is our son Logan, and he's standing next to a three and a half year old tree that is really tall, 15 to 18 feet tall. Okay. And then in July of this, I took this photo in July of 2019. And now you have trees out there that are over 35 feet tall. And their diameter of the trunk is 12 to 14 inches. They have grown extremely well, very fast. And I think we were able to show now that the experiment has been a success. And this is a very healthy, and we've had arborists out here look at this field as well as other foresters, but a very healthy coast redwood forest. Okay. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the special clones that Dr. Libby provided. This is, for many years, people thought that this was the, the Dyarsville Giant was the tallest coast redwood tree in the range at 370 feet. And then it fell over in a really big windstorm in 1991. And we were able to, the foresters were, and scientists were able to get seed and tissue from this tree. When it fell over and we have some of those in the field. We also have some, two trees that they call them Luna. They were from coast redwood seeds that orbited the moon in Apollo 14. And then some other clones that Dr. Libby just liked. And they're just interesting. They look different. Many people don't realize there's over 30 different cultivars of coast redwood. And including the next one, which is very interesting. You can go to the next slide. This is called a Corbell KT. It was discovered in 1966 in Corbell, up in Humboldt County. It's a redwood that they think has one less chromosome than a normal redwood tree. Redwoods, if many people don't realize, they're much more complex than a human. They have six chromosomes. Humans have two chromosomes. And so the redwood tree is genetically one of the oldest organisms in the world over, that has grown today, still growing. It's over 150 million years old. And, but these Corbell KTs, they grow more like a Christmas tree. And they only reach a maximum height of around 100 feet. And they actually did trademark them and try and enter and have a Christmas tree industry with them at one point. But like, like all other coast redwoods, when you cut them, it sends up a new tree. So you, the root system that was there maintains, it retains the carbon that it's sequestering and sends up a new tree very quickly that develops very fast. Next slide. So these, quickly, these are some of the benefits. You can see how beautiful the forest is. We talked a little briefly about the carbon sequestration. These trees will generate massive amounts of oxygen. We have talked about, not so far in the presentation, but there was some talk about city trails. I know at past council meetings, and we would like to create walking paths out in the forest that connect to the other city walking system. There would be a future timber crop, and we would do an agreement with the city of St. Helena. So we'd be sharing in the net revenue from those, from those harvestings. There's also, I didn't mention, there's, we've been growing seed from, from the Las Passadas Forest. Las Passadas Forest up in Angwin is one of the easternmost coast redwood ranges. And they don't get any fog up there. They get cold and maybe snow and it's dry. And so genetically, they're very different. And we have over 200 of those now that we've propagated from seeds off cones that were collected. And we're looking forward to seeing how they respond in the forest. This land is, is being reforested or afforestation. Was previously in vineyards years ago, currently fallow. And we've, we've watched, this was the biggest surprise to me, was to watch the forest ecosystem develop with all kinds of, started with spiders and insects and the earthworms, and then rolled into tree frogs. And all kinds of birds are nesting out there now. And it's really been an amazing experience to watch all that. Next slide. And this is just some photos that I've snapped over time with the raptors. And this, the white bird in the upper right corner is a cattle grit, which is very rare to see in Napa County. And I grew up in Florida. You see them all over the place. Next slide, please. And then there's also been challenges. Then the winter, we talked about the really cold temperatures. And there's been pests and there's water quality and weed issues. Next slide. So this is what happens when the, in the winter, the coast redwoods will experience this bronzing. Not all the trees we planted experienced it. And so it was interesting to watch some of the trees that did get the bronzing and others that didn't. And as I mentioned earlier, genetically, there's just, there's quite a few differences. And it's just been, it's been very, it's been a great learning experience. Next slide. This was one of our biggest challenges, the little California vole. And in years three and four, before we started pruning around the base of the trees, they established nests in the base of the tree and girdled about 30 or 40 pretty decent sized trees. And you can see the damage they did there to the right. And so now we don't use any poison on them. Or what we do, we just keep the base of the tree very clean now. And, and we've, they don't have that habitat, so they're not killing the trees anymore. They're still out there, but they're not making nests at the base of the trees. Next slide. We also have a drip system for the irrigation that runs on top of the ground. And the coyotes like to chew it, the puppies, and the, in this, I think, play tug of war with it. So it's an ongoing challenge with us. And we, we've buried most of it now today, but it has been a challenge. And then there's, in the effluent, there is quite a bit of algae. And so we do have to regularly change the filters to make sure that there's enough water getting to the trees. Next slide. And then when they're really young, we have to watch the weeds that are growing around the trees. This is on the left, the Dykon radish, and then on the right, this curly dock. And they both have these very aggressive taproots that can sever the root system of the young seedlings that we saw in the earlier slide. Next slide. So I wanted, just to conclude with, with just, again, saying that we think it's a really great project for the community. We think the creating this forest has a really high benefits of the aesthetics, the ecosystems, walking paths, carbon sequestration, oxygen generation, legacy trees, and selective timber harvest. There would be after, there would be a thinning after 15 years. And then any timber harvest revenues would be shared with the city. And we feel like it's an incredible benefit to the community, especially when you look out for many, many years. And I wanted to show in the next three, the next, these three, last three slides, is this is Rotorua, New Zealand. And these coast redwood trees were planted in 1901. And then this is the Benmore Botanical Gardens in Argyle, Scotland, which is, they call this the Redwood Avenue of Giant Sequoias. And I was there in 2016, visiting some of my relatives. And my mom, who's, I think, on the call still in Florida, staying up late. Her parents grew up in Kilmarak, very close to this. And my, my grandpa was a great gardener, and we're pretty sure he visited this forest. So again, this is some, an opportunity we have. And this is the last photo and last slide. And again, it's in Rotorua. And I just wanted everyone to get the vision for what it really could look like. It's not going to look like that in 10 years or 20 years, but in 100 years it is. And I think that's, this is the kind of project it is that we really need to take as a community, that really long-term vision. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Asmuth. That's just tremendous. And we'll get into a little council discussion here. And I just want to sort of reiterate some of the points quickly. You know, how important forests are in terms of climate, in terms of cooling the land, in terms of microclimate, you know, for growing our Napa Valley grapes, for community livability, for ecosystem, complete ecosystems, birds and animals. And I just think this is a remarkable project. I've been down a number of times to visit the current redwood forest and seeing an ability to expand that, I think, is a real opportunity for our community. And I think the way we're looking at this is, is we do need to make sure that the wastewater treatment plant, everything gets approved for that to move forward. But the idea is that we also discuss sort of dual tracking. So if that all gets approved, we're poised to move forward on this. And so that's, I believe, where things are. And I want to thank Mr. Asmuth for the, the original concept that was put forward many years ago and sticking with it and bringing it back to us now to consider. So are there any council thoughts at this point? Any questions regarding the presentation? I'm seeing Mr. Chateau's hand.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul, and everybody who worked on this. What an incredible, incredible project. And I couldn't be more grateful that you're giving us, you're presenting us after all of this hard work and the funding that you've put into this with other people, that we can now take climate action. And it's just the most amazing space. And I love seeing that vision of where it can be. And I got the chance to go out there with Vice Mayor Doring, and we already saw what a special place it is and what incredible opportunity to see wildlife. While we were out there, there was that owl that flew through.
Yeah, barn owl, yeah.
Oh, it was just incredible. And I really, really can't wait for more in our community to be able to experience that. So I really hope that we can figure out the way that the public can access that dream of having a trail along the river that connects would be so fantastic if there's a way that we could work with people in our community to make that happen. But I just really, really thank you. And my question is, is there a way, have you had some thoughts on how we measure the carbon that we would be putting back into the earth as part of our greenhouse gas emissions? Because measuring that's going to be really important for our community moving forward.
I actually took a little time on that yesterday. There's a website called i, little i- tree. And it has all kinds of carbon calculators and things like that. And I played, there's different formulas you can, there's actually a formula where you take a percentage of the dry wood to come up with how much carbon a particular tree has. The coast redwoods, because of their massive root systems, they store about 30% of their carbon underground in their root system. So that formula is not as good. But I like the i-tree one, because you actually put in the tree species. And I was just playing around with it. And I said, okay, if you had the 3,000 trees and you left them for 40 years and you didn't cut them, it would, there would accumulate over that time about 17 million pounds of carbon. So that worked out to be about 8,000 tons, 8,300 tons or something like that. So as I showed those quotes earlier, it's just, they do sequester quicker than any tree in the world. And they're, and they're super fast growing. And then when you do harvest, like I said, about over 30% of the carbon stays in the ground in that tree. And then it sends up a new tree. But it's massive amounts of carbon that would be, that would be accumulated.
One last question. Could you talk a bit about the thinking behind thinning the trees and cutting them down every 15 years and then just leaving them?
It's a really good question, and it's something that can be explored. The one idea of the timber harvest was, that was a way to help pay for the project into the future. So the project would always be self-funding. The Arcata Community Forest does exactly that. They have a, there's this 2,000 acres, but it's the same concept. They manage the forest for recreation. They have, you know, 18 hole disc golf. They have miles and miles of hiking trails. But they also do regular timber harvests as well. So a managed forest concept is not unusual. But if we were never going to cut a tree, we would not plant on this dense. We would go with a much less dense planting plan. And you would still have to manage the forest. And you still would have to do the things we do today, which is mow it and prune it and take care of it until the trees get to be a certain size where the small vole or something like that isn't going to girdle it. So there'd still be that period of time. And in our community, I know we have the ability to raise money, we're, you know, for really great projects. So if the community decided that they don't want a timber harvest plan ever in the future, they just want to kind of do a park there, that would be a discussion to have. And then we need to figure out, okay, how are we going to fund it? And, you know, have enough funds in perpetuity to take care of this forest, because I don't think it's something that we would want to put onto the city. Did that answer your question?
It did. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we seeing any other council questions or comments at this point? I am not seeing any. I'm going to open it in a moment for, oh, I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Just echo the comments that you made earlier and the comments of Councilmember Chateau. I am very supportive of the project for the reasons stated. The lawyer part of me would want to have a little bit more drill down in terms of compatibility with viticultural practices, in terms of water use and anything like that. And also the easements to make sure that when we go down that path, that we actually have the right to access, above and beyond, the access to. to access above and beyond the access to our water treatment plant. We need to kind of think about that in advance. But I'm extremely supportive of the project. There's a part of me that that is extremely supportive for our youth as a place to improve mental health, mental wellness, connecting to a forest, being a part of a of a new forest. As you 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 have the Japanese term for it, but forest bathing. But there's some connections there that I haven't fully thought about. But I think that that's important as we go forward to try to get our younger people involved in this kind of a project, but I can see the the intrinsic value in that. So I thank you for your work and your contributions to our community, Paul and your wife. And I know that you have many family members on board here. So welcome to St. Helena, to all your family cousins and and whoever. Thanks.
I do. I do want to say that my wife Marilyn has been so supportive of this project from the beginning and taking care of the crews when we're out there, working on hot days and cold mornings and and anyways, she she loves the project as well.
I thank you. I'm seeing Mr. Hall.
Thank you. And thank you, Paul. It looks like a great project. I I love the way you thank and thank you for your persistence and sticking with it over the years here. I was just gonna dovetail Vice Mayor Doring on your comment about using it to educate children. I think it's it's a great idea. And if there's a way we can formalize a forest management program in our schools and use this forest to help educate, then maybe we can expand that out a little bit further to the thousands of acres of forest that we have around us.
I think it's a great comment. And I I know Amanda Benton is on the call, the forester from the Napa RCD. And that is something I know Amanda feels strongly about as well. And maybe Amanda wants to make a few comments. And and I know Maria Hogg is not on the on the meeting, but she has put us in touch with the AP Biology teacher at the school. And it has a great potential in that regard.
I think so, too.
Those are, thank you. I'm seeing Amanda here. And yes, please, from our RCD, if you have some thoughts, it'd be great.
It's, you know, mostly the echo chamber that we're in, which is a great one, because these are all wonderful points. And, you know, Paul is a gem for having come up with this project long before the RCD got involved. We are very interested in, you know, the outcome of it. I do forestry, but we the RCD has major environmental education component as well. So, you know, the Acorns to Oaks Program, and I know we've been working with St. Helena City Schools and our education team is still working with schoolchildren, even, you know, doing environmental education over Zoom, which is its own special form of challenges these days. But I think there's great potential and and really good potential for sustainable forestry education. I I want to, you know, really support the idea of commercial harvesting to show that a forest can exist with, you know, sustaining itself and its community and that we, you know, it doesn't have to be an all or nothing in terms of trees. We we can have trees and we can raise them and grow them sustainably and resilient to all of the natural processes, including fire and drought and all of that. So, yeah, hugely supportive and happy to help in any way. And and just thanks everyone for considering them.
Thank you. So if Mr. Hardy, any comments before I go to public comment?
Thank you, Meryl Zorath. Paul, that was a fabulous presentation and outright inspirational. Has me reflecting back on any number of experiences I've had in in mature redwood forests. They are very, very special places. And seeing those slides showing how great and wonderful a planted redwood grove can become over time. That that gives gives us a lot to think about and personally has me thinking that you know, in addition to supporting this project out in our disposal area, we should be on the lookout for opportunities to plant redwoods wherever we find them. They've always been a part of the Napa Valley. They're around us. You know, here in town, you know, I live across from Carpe Field and the elementary school where children planted redwoods many, many years ago that are now a part of the urban landscape. Somebody planted one in what's now my backyard years ago. And and I take great pleasure in seeing it grow. So I thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to open public comment. I'll I'll look to Cindy to see if she's seeing any hands up. I'll take a look as well. I'm seeing
We do. I see one hand raised. And I'm allowing Michelle to talk. Michelle, you should be able to go ahead and address.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Hi, I'm Michelle Benvenuto from Napa County. And this is such a great project, or as Mayor Ellsworth described it, remarkable. It takes fallow and unproductive land and uses it to benefit the community, including reducing greenhouse gases, supporting a forest ecosystem, enhancing the soil biology, providing wildlife habitat and creating future walking trails. In addition, this project is very well thought out. It's compatible with adjacent land uses, including vineyard production. And it's an innovative way to utilize the affluent from St. Helena's wastewater treatment plant. We are very fortunate for the vision and commitment from Paul and Marilyn Asmit, the partnerships they've developed, and encourage the council to vote in favor of this remarkable project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that public comment. Mr. Vopoulos, are we seeing any additional public comment?
I'm looking to see. And I'm not seeing any other public comments.
Okay, I'll bring it back and close the public comic. I'm seeing Ms. Ms. Chateau's hand.
I did just want to note how excited I am about the oak tree part of the project. Having that leading up to the river and having more land protected that close to the river is fantastic. And I'm really excited about that part as well. So thank you.
Eric?
I I just, I I love everything about the project. I just want to ask Erica Smithies. Are you sure this isn't going to be in the way of anything at the wastewater treatment plant? Just have to ask it.
That has been one of my main concerns of getting out in front of this. The the state water board has been very supportive of it. I know Mr. Paul Asmit checked in with his state contact, and then we brought this project forward to our representatives with our discharge permit, because there is concerns, you know, it's ten acres of our spray fields. But hopefully with their upgrade of the phase, phase one upgrades, that maybe that's going to be okay. So that's all I can impart right now. But that was one of our concerns.
And my understanding, the way we're we're tracking this is that we're waiting to see and make sure that we get all the approvals on the wastewater treatment plant. Having this poised and ready to go and that reasoning is that we don't want to miss a growing season. If if it looks like it's a go, we want to be ready to plant this year. So we're, the idea is to sort of move this forward and having it all set and ready if we get the green light. And Erica, is that what I'm understanding?
The administrative draft permit for the the permit reissuance for discharge is is underway. So you know, I can't say that we're going to meet that timeframe for planting trees this spring. They're 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 separate issues.
Okay. But I I think we've got a sense of of great support from the council and the community. And it looks like everybody's watching it very closely. And so we'll we'll proceed forward, waiting to see how we do on our our the permitting from the wastewater treatment plant, and then we can decide how we move forward. Any other thoughts on this issue? Okay, so Mr. City Manager, we've got it in your hands now to sort of watch and and calculate where we are. And you'll be able to see when to bring this back to us. Is that my understanding?
That's right. The next steps are outlined in the staff report. And obviously, there's full council support for advancing this. We'll be working internally on permitting issues as the wastewater treatment plant project matures. And and we'll keep the dots connected very quickly here in the coming really in the coming month or two to see if the timing is going to align correctly this year.
Okay, very good. And thank you again, Mr. Asmit. And it was wonderful to see your family on the call as well. And thank you, Amanda Benton from RCD for being here as well. And all the work from staff, et cetera. So thank you.
Again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we'll move now to our final item. And this is eleven point two. This is request for city council participation in zoning code update subcommittee. And this is prepared by Maya DeRosa, our planning and building director.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. And my report tonight will be brief. Primarily, I just want to provide you some background where we are with the project and the need to create the subcommittee to continue the work on the zoning code. So last year, the city embarked upon a comprehensive update to the city's zoning code. Lisa Wise Consulting was hired. The early public engagement phase of the project's complete, a detailed recommendations memo has been completed and is attached to the staff report. Prior to the 2020 election, we had city council members Koberstein and Knudsen participating in an ad hoc zoning subcommittee along with then Planning Commissioner Chair Lester Hardy. And then with the recent election, November, and the replacement of the two council members, Koberstein and Knudsen, there's a need for the city council to appoint two members to support these continued efforts to update the zoning code. And then on the planning commission side, we'll have one planning commissioner, which is the chair, who will continue to participate in that subcommittee. The staff report attachment provides an outline of our long term work effort to complete the project. There is still a substantial amount of work effort to be done to complete the zoning code update. And the subcommittee, the subcommittee has a very essential role in reviewing the draft sections of the code, providing feedback to staff and the consultant prior to releasing that to the public for review and comment. The consultant has completed a substantial portion of the part three of the code, which includes our development standards, use table, overlay zones. And then there's additional coordination going on concurrently regarding the review of the new telecommunications ordinance by the city attorney. And we want to close up that review before releasing it to the subcommittee. And so we anticipate having the release of the part three of the code next month to the subcommittee. And so again, the action for tonight is to have appoint two members of the council to serve going forward on this process. And and if you have any questions, I'm of course available. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there any initial comment or question by the council on this?
No, but I'm interested in serving on it.
Okay. And and the other thought I had, and I want to check in with Lester. Mr. Hardy, do you think it's of value in terms of consistency from your work on this over time for you to continue being on the subcommittee?
Yes.
And and is your capacity there?
For this, yes. And it's a, you know, seamless transition for me since I've already been working on it.
That's that's what I wanted to inquire, sort of where you were on that. And Anna, you're interested as well? Any thoughts from the rest of the council here where where we are? Eric, sorry, I can't hear you.
Thank you, Jeff. I I was just saying, I would be interested, but I'm I'm completely behind both Lester and Anna here.
Mr. Doring, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I am interested, but I think the two council members mentioned are very capable, and I trust that they'll do a good job.
Okay. So let me let me open it to public comment, and then we'll come back and we'll we'll sort of move forward from there. So I will ask our city clerk.
I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. So we'll bring it back. And so so Eric, you're okay. It's something you'd be interested in, but you'd be supportive if Anna had an interest?
Yeah, if if both Anna and Lester want to do it, I think that sounds great. You know, if for some reason, nobody was interested, I'm happy to jump in.
Okay, thank you for that. Well, I I'm supportive of of this configuration. And I think having the two of you on it with Lester with his background on it and can bring Anna in sort of that way, I think this is excellent. So I'd support that as well. And so on this, we would need to is this, is this just give us giving direction? Or do we need to vote on this?
Consensus of the council.
We're requesting a motion. The recommendation is to pass a motion.
I'm sorry, here we go.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Hardy and Ms. Chateau to this subcommittee.
So moved.
And a second, please.
A second.
And a roll call.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. So we have our subcommittee and we have our, we're at the end of our meeting. I want to just encourage everybody to stick with our COVID protocol. Make sure to sign up for the vaccination interest form at the county. Let's keep our community sticking with this as we go forward. We're not through it yet, but we're getting there. And let's be aware over the next few days with this rain that we've needed, but but we may get a lot of it at once. So let's stick together as a community through that, too, and look out for our neighbors. Is there anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn? Seeing nothing, I will say thank you to the council, to the staff and the community who's been on, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.